Oh, boy.
The October meeting of the Library Board of Trustees is hereby convened. Our first order of business is to welcome two new trustees, one of which is an old trustee, but welcome back Bob for another four years. Thank you very much for re-listening.
Oh, yes.
So appreciated. And then I will introduce our newest trustee, Jennifer Felgus. And I'm going to welcome, and you want to say a word or two?
It's coming full circle. When I moved to the Monterey Peninsula in 1987, I was the Bookmobile Librarian for Monterey Public Library. It's fun to go complete circle and have a completely different role in being on the board side of it. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you. Some of you all get to know, Marcia and I know each other because we both were at CSQ MB together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your, thank you in advance for your service.
Yes.
We're going to try to adjourn this meeting by six o'clock because we know that there's a national debate and some people may want to watch that. So we're, we're going to try that. So our first item of business is the call to order and the roll call.
Thank you. Trustee Felgus.
Present.
Trustee Joshi.
Present.
Trustee Petty.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
Chair Moro.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item of business is a presentation, a report from the Public Library Friends and Foundation President. And Diane, welcome. And congratulations on your new role as the Monterey Peninsula Library Friends and Foundation President.
Thank you. I'm, I'm a full eight days into this, so I, my report will be pretty short. I haven't, I had a, a chance to delve in too deeply and all I know is that I do have big shoes to fill because Doug's, Doug was, is going to be a tough act to follow and, and, and he has a completely different skillset than mine, but we will muddle through. And even though it is very new, we have set some, set some goals. I sent, is, is it part of your packet, the, the committee?
Yes.
The thing I sent? So we can, we can talk about if you have any questions on that. What I didn't put in a report because it's pretty fluid and, and underdeveloped are our goals. And so I tried to compartmentalize things into long-term and short-term. And we are in a head spinning year. So I'm thinking long-term, it would be wonderful to be slow and steady and be a little like comfort food. No, no big shocking moves and, and just build because we can't really imagine what next year will be like. But for long-term goals, it would be great to increase membership. I'm not sure what the number of library cardholders we have, but, but it does not mirror our, our membership. And having membership dues starting at only $15 and end up from there. But, but it isn't about the money it would raise. It's the engaging the community in their library. So, and, and the business community too. So, so a little, little more focus on that. And then also because we aren't out in the world right now, raising public awareness in the community through social media has been something we need more focus on. So we'll be working on that. The, developing the board, it's, it's really seen a lot of growth with, with some people churning out and, and some new good energy and skillset coming in. We have three new board members and, and the other great development that's recent is that some of our bigger committees are, are, we have members of those that are not their board members that we're drawing from outside just the, our, our small group, which is a nice thing to seek some wisdom. We have on our fund development and our events committee, we have members that aren't just from, from the board. So that's nice. On short-term, it really sort of boils down to the events. And right now we're working on MC Gives with staff mostly, but, but that's part of ours. We'll be kicking off the recovery campaign that Mary Jane will be talking about, and that will take us through the next year, year and a half. The Chocolate and Wine Event is our biggest fundraiser of the event and, and friend raiser. And since we won't be able to do that live, we are trying to at least remind people that, of this event that they loved and, you know, reimagine it in a virtual way to keep people engaged and know that February is a fun library event. And we'll just make it different. So, so that is getting the, his event with Al Kiyoshi is going to be speaking for us in December, and that's exciting. So, so those are the, the events that are coming up. But in the, an ongoing effort is our used book program, which has, it's raised a little under $2,400 since we got started a couple of months ago. But just as exciting is that we've built a team of really dedicated volunteers who are members of the Friends that have become engaged that weren't, weren't active before. And, and so it's exciting to see, give people an opportunity to be involved. And, and besides that, it will be a nice, slow and steady way to raise some funds in the background that, that we can do without having to gather people. And on the committee side, if there's anything that you wanted to know more about from what I sent, I'm happy to, to answer questions if you have them.
Shall I ask, are there any questions from board members or Diane? And forgive me, I didn't put, put your full name down there for the record. It's Diane Delorme.
Delorme.
Okay. Any questions? Bill, Bob?
Um, did you, were you, did you see the, I guess, brief recovery activity that the Ventana Wilderness Society did? Because you know, the fire destroyed, well, it killed a lot of the birds and completely destroyed their research facility. And for, I think it was about two weeks, maybe three weeks, you know, it wasn't in place, a virtual event in place of one they couldn't have, like our chocolate and wine would be. But what they had was an online auction, kind of like the silent auction that we have had at the Chocolate and Wine. And then interspersed with those, you could go online and make your bid and go back, kind of like eBay, and the next day you'd go back. But it wasn't eBay, it was all done through them. And then they also had pictures and some videos and things like that, that you could click on and sort of entertain yourself a little bit. But they raised a significant amount of money by doing that. And the, you know, the items that they had donated, geez, I think the least expensive one was maybe 10, 10, $15, and they went all the way up to $5,000. And they had many, many, many of them. And I know two of my friends are on the board of the Ventana Wilderness. So I've heard from them and it was just a, a warm feeling, very successful financially event. And, you know, I don't know how you're going to have me pour my chocolate beer virtually. I'll probably have to be pouring it into here instead of handing you a glass this year. But I've been trying to virtually imagine a virtual chocolate and wine. And that's the best I can do so far. But maybe some kind of online event like that, because I know it worked tremendously for Ventana Wilderness. And it was sort of like a short-term, you know, recovery effort that they needed to do.
So was there never a, an actual gathering or?
No, it was not an in-person. It was all, it was all through an online setup. And they, I can't remember the name of the organization that they hired to actually run the auction. I could look it up because I bought something and so I could look it up.
Yeah, maybe Bob, you and Diane could talk offline.
Sure.
That would be great. Yeah, I've seen a few of those, those events and, and online auctions are, are definitely an option. They, we were a little reluctant to be asking businesses that are suffering for donations. And, and a lot of, when, when we've done our silent auction at the Chocolate and Wine, our most popular items are, are excursions and, and activities, which are also a little bit off. So the thought that we head forward so that you do get your chocolate and wine, we, we did think that there would be donors willing to donate wine and maybe chocolate, but for sure the wineries would participate. And, and we could sell tickets and actually deliver you a little basket on the day of. And that rather than, than auctioning items for you to purchase, we would, it would be more of a fund of need for the library. And, you know, maybe, you know, they, they're buying a book or a set of books or something, something for collections or, or any, any need that the library may have that, you know, from, from the $15 level up to the $5,000 level.
Well, I think it would be a good, good way to make people aware of the wish list, buy a book, you get to read it, goes to the library thing. And it's not really an auction, but having that be part of, you know, of this. And then, then some auction items too, where I'm bidding against you and Jim for something that we all want. And, and with the Ventana one, it was, like I say, it was on for several weeks. And if you went back on day three, there were new items that had been added by different donors, you know, who were donating artwork or whatever it was. So, you know, I would go on the third day to see if anybody outbid me for something. I'd go, hey, I didn't see that yesterday. So, you know, it was kind of like, you know, gathering moss rolling down the hill.
Right. And stretching it out is a little fun too. So yeah, we'll, we'll talk.
Yeah, I think so. Any other, Jim?
Yeah, I just, I was interested in seeing your comments, Diane, about doing something with the executive committee. And it seems to me that makes a lot of sense, just kind of my two cents. When I was working with the board, you know, in, in your transition process, it always seemed a little strange to me that there, there wasn't an executive board since the, the overall board only meets every quarter. So I would just, to me, it makes a lot of sense. So I just would encourage you to pursue that.
Right, right. Thank you. I, yeah, I have felt that quarterly is a little light and especially in this time when we can't have little sub-meetings in between time. And so you don't want to lose your momentum. You have a meeting and everybody's fired up and then we all go off to our lives. And so, yeah, I think that putting some things in between on the calendar will, will keep interest up. Thanks.
And I would, wanted to make one other comment if I could, Marcia. And that was just a thank you for stepping up and for all the work you've done so far. And I'm sure you'll be doing even more as in your new role. So thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you. You took the words right out of my mouth. Thank you very much. So I think we need to call for a public comment, Francesca?
Oh, yes.
I raised my hand and nobody.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. I just thought that for work.
I didn't see it.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I did it in the participants thing. You see it there now or?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. I do see it.
Okay. So I just thought it would be good for Diane to tell us how this event will work. You know, do we pay by PayPal? Do we go to the library and pay for it? Do we get a basket of goodies and that we drink together and eat together? And so, how does this whole thing work?
It's yet to be determined.
Right. It, yeah, it, it's a little early in, in, this is, we're in the dreaming stages, but it probably would be a PayPal thing, much like you buy your tickets to the live event. And, and then, yeah, when, when we know who is attending or enrolled and kickoff. So, but I'll, I'll keep you posted.
All right.
Other trustee comments that I missed? No, no more hands raised here? Okay. So any other, you guys getting a call for other public comments?
If you don't mind my hanging around for a little while, I have an important debate to, to watch also, but I'd like to get around and listen for a little bit. Good. Okay.
Great. So for viewers watching, we do have a new process for public participation. We encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, the secure service for use by government agencies. Joining on Zoom is preferred because there is no lag time. You are connected live in real time to the meeting. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey. This has an approximate 10-second delay. And also on Comcast Channel 25, up to a 90-second delay. If you plan to make a public comment, join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone and ensure you join in time to accommodate the delay. To join the meeting using the link or phone number on the Library Board Agenda is at icertchmontreal.org. Since this meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, you'll find this information on the Chyron and dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press the pound sign. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment, you can raise your hand if you are using Zoom. If you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. When called upon, dial star six to unmute yourself. We do ask that public commenters turn off TV or their computer speakers or go to another room. I will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. And at this time, there appears to be no public comments. So thank you, Chair Moro.
Okay. So with no public comment, we'll move to the consent agenda. As far as the, the minutes are concerned, the Library Board received a written public comment requesting a revision to the minutes, and I recommend we accept those changes. And with those changes, does any trustee wish to pull another consent item off the consent agenda or make any other corrections to the minutes? Okay.
I think that I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including items two and three, with a correction to number two that our chair has mentioned.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And then I'll go ahead and see if there might be anybody listening who would like to make any comments on the consent agenda. Again, you.
Bob has a comment.
I just wanted to ask, what is the change to the minutes that you're recommending?
Francesca?
It was sent in the email by the public participant. So, and it was sent to trustees. And then that will be updated.
Can it be read so that those of us who didn't receive it know what it says? Or is it lengthy?
It's lengthy a bit. And you also received it, and it will be included in the revised minutes.
Thank you. Okay.
So just to ensure for anybody watching that does want to make a comment, you can dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1609322118. And one more time, that phone number is 833-568-8864. Meeting ID 1609322118.
So we now vote on the consent agenda?
Correct. If there are no other comments. Okay. And trustee Felgus?
Yes.
Trustee Joshi?
Yes.
Trustee Petty?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Chair Moro?
Yes.
Okay. So we're, now we move to public comments. Public comments allows the public to speak for a maximum of three minutes on any subject that's not on the agenda. So.
Hey, so for any viewers watching who would like to make a public comment, if you're here on Zoom, you're welcome to raise your Zoom hand. Or if you would like to join by telephone, please dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. And there are no callers, Chair Moro.
Okay. So now we move to new business. Item four in new business is to approve a letter of appreciation to Diane's predecessor, Doug Holzman, outgoing president of the Monterey Public Library Friends and Foundation, on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees. I can read, there's a, there's just a small paragraph in there. Doug Holzman became the president of the Friends of the Monterey Public Library in October 2018. Thanks to his indefatigable effort and guidance, the Friends transitioned to the Monterey Public Library Friends and Foundation in January 2020. This was a significant and complex transition that will enhance fundraising efforts so vital to our library's future. We're grateful to Doug for his organizational and facilitation skills, his vision and his leadership. And included in the packet is a, the draft of a letter from all of us trustees to Doug, thanking him for his service. Any questions, comments, additions, corrections? Here we go. Now, we call for a public comment on this item as well?
Great. If anyone would like to make a public comment, you may do so by raising your Zoom hand, or you may dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. Enter meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press the pound sign.
Okay. Hearing.
There are no comments.
We call for a vote on this item and express our, if Doug is out there somewhere listening, we express our appreciation to you. And we need to vote on this item, yes?
If I may, Marcia, I'd like to move approval of the letter and heartily thank Doug for all his tremendous work. I, I think he was instrumental in moving the Friends to the Friends and Foundation, which I think will benefit the, the library for decades to come. So for my heartfelt thanks, I worked with Doug many years ago, and it was great to work with him again, and I hope to continue working with him in his continued little, little less prominent role. But thank you very much.
Yeah, Harish?
I'd like to second that. And I have that, you know, I, I got to know Doug from working in the Chalked and Wine Planning Committee. And really enjoyed working with him. He's a good, good person to have on your side, and I'm glad to be having him.
Hey, thank you for the second. I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, trustee Felguth?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Joshi?
Hi.
Trustee Petty?
Yes, and I would like to add that Doug went way above and beyond what was expected. And I sure hope that while he's transferring the honor of being president of the Friends and Foundation, I sure hope that he stays involved, and I expect that he will, just knowing what his interests are. But thanks again, Doug.
Thank you. Vice Chair Thompson?
Give me it.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Chair Moreau?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And the next item is we, we receive the Quarterly Trust Fund Report. Inga, you want?
Sure. So this is a quarterly report that shows what we've taken into the trust fund and what we've expended from the trust fund. And I guess at this point, I just would like to know if there were any questions about the report. Also, in the interest of time, I won't walk you through it step by step.
And does anybody have questions on it or want to be walked through it or?
Has that been approved by the City Council?
So the, the trust fund budget was approved by the City Council, I believe it was the 6th of October. So what this is, is simply showing you what expenditures have come out of the trust fund budget and also of the approved trust fund budget, and then also what income has been received to the trust fund account.
And Jim?
I, I did have one question on packet page 20, where it shows the, at the bottom, the amount contributed revenue for various funds, the Endowment Fund, the Trust Fund, and the Friends and Foundation. There, there's a note on page, packet page 21, indicating we are no longer counting transfers, just actual dollars raised. So if I understand that correctly, if the Friends and Foundation raises some money and transfers that to the trust fund, it would only be counted under the Friends and Foundation. So any money shown under the trust fund is money people actually gave directly to the trust fund. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Good.
So in the first part of the report, in, it does show monies that have been allocated to the trust fund that may have come from donations from the Friends, but in the portion under fund development, we're just looking, as you said, at those funds once, which is, you know, how much have the Friends and Foundation raised, not how much have they given us after they've raised those funds.
I, I really appreciate that. In the past, I've been a little confused about whether there was double counting going on or not. So I appreciate that clarification.
And Bob?
I have two quick ones, Inga. On the, on packet page 19, where they talk about expenditures, the, the one-line item says library materials.
Yes.
What is, that's not books. What, what, what library materials are we, have we spent $9,000 on?
Well, it's sort of an unfortunate situation. So we had Hoopla, which was a very expensive digital book service, and also films and so forth. One of their invoices, which was about $3,000 and something dollars, wasn't paid in the last fiscal year. That was an oversight. And then when it was found, it was too late to charge it back to last fiscal year. So that came out of, out of that. So a third of that is the Hoopla invoice. We also had one month worth of Hoopla during July, so that's another $3,000. And then we switched over to Cloud Library and the setup costs. So that's, it's taking the place of Hoopla, but the setup cost for Cloud Library was $3,000.
Okay, and since you mentioned that, I discovered something. I don't know where I've been. Maybe it hasn't been there and it's not my fault, but I just discovered Flipster, the magazine. And I didn't know that we had it, but I hope it's not expensive or anything you're thinking about being short-term, because that's fantastic.
So I'll just put in a, a quick plug for Flipster. So Flipster was provided to us for free through our membership in the, in MOBAC. And MOBAC is part of the Pacific Library Partnership. So Pacific Library Partnership receives state dollars through a federal program. And they said, what are the smallest libraries? And we are one of the smallest libraries in our membership. What do they really need? And since we had to cancel all of our magazine subscriptions, you know, we chimed in, well, we don't have any magazines of any kind to offer our community. And other libraries as well chimed in, and that's what we got.
So that'll be ongoing as long as we're members of MOBAC?
So it's free for this year, and if we had wanted to pay for it, we're one of 14 libraries, and the total cost came to about $90,000.
For all 14? For all the libraries?
Total.
So it'd be like $6,000. Yeah, okay. Well, that, that's a, I just wanted to put a plug in there for however it happened, because for me personally, not only are there several magazines in that group that I'm interested in, there's at least one that now I can stop paying for my own personal subscription and just read it online. The second thing I wanted to bring up is on page, packet page 21, where you have a footnote with regard to the Endowment Fund. And you, you're talking about how, at the time of the writing of the packet page materials, the Endowment Fund had risen to $322,000, which was up substantially from the low of $269,000 back in March. And, but then you mentioned that as of December 31st, which is in effect January 1, it was 316. And so looking at the year-to-date then, starting January 1 at 316, and looking at the current one at around 322, that's only an increase of like $6,000, which is only 1.7%. And I, I'm just going to share, we don't have to discuss it, but the fact that regardless of ups and downs, an increase of only 1.7% year-to-date doesn't, it depresses me. It doesn't impress me. There, there are many safe investments that have made three, four times that much. Very conservative, low-risk, the kind that you'd put in there if you didn't want to take a chance on losing a penny. And 1.7%, even with the ups and downs. Just, I think we need to do some examining of where we have our money.
Okay, thanks for that comment. I don't know if Mary Jane has anything to say in response, since Mary Jane has pulled these numbers. She might have observed something or that she wants to add.
Just, only, I certainly hear you, Bob. And when I look at my own investments, they look a little sad as well, because that's the reality of the year that we saw. It's a source of glass half-full that were up from under $270,000, which is where we were sliding at the beginning of the pandemic. So I can't say much about the, I don't know in detail about the endowments, the community foundations' investment practices. I imagine they're pretty standard, but it's certainly a conversation we could have.
We can certainly ask the, the Community Foundation to come and talk to us at a future meeting about this if you want. We, we did that, we, we, we did it a few months ago, where they talked about their investment strategy.
My, my guess is that there are other bodies like yourselves that are making similar comments, and that I bet if we keep our eye on the, their newsletter and their annual report, there will be some narrative that may be helpful.
Okay, other comments or questions about the, about the trust fund report? Okay. So we need public comment on this as well, Francesca?
Yes. For anybody watching that would like to make a comment, please dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1609322118. Of course, you are also welcome to join us live on the Zoom Gov webinar, which is in real time. Once again, that phone number is 833-568-8864. Meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. There are no callers.
Okay. So there's no vote on that one, so we'll move on to the next item, which is to receive a report from the Quarterly Museums and Cultural Arts Activities Report. And that is the Director of the Library and Museums.
Yes. So again, in the interest of time, I won't walk you through this report. I'll just remind you that when we took over having museums being part of the library back in July of 2019, we thought it was a good idea to have quarterly reports. And we were, of course, expecting Dennis Copeland to give those reports, but Dennis Copeland retired in June, and so I'm giving the report. So it's very brief, because I haven't had a lot of time to work on museums activities. And I did want to draw your attention to packet page 26, where I mentioned that in our July 27th meeting, the Museums and Cultural Arts Commission approved, revised, reviewed, and adopted a strategic plan. And then I go on to say attached, but I inadvertently neglected to attach it. So I'll send that as a follow-up email, but it is publicly available if you go into the meeting document on iSearch. You can find it for that meeting that took place on July 27. Other than that, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board members? Any comment from the public on this report?
For anyone watching, you may dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Please enter meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, please press the pound sign. Of course, we do invite you and encourage you to participate live on the Zoom webinar, which is in real time. There are no callers. Turn around.
Okay. Thank you, Inga, for a very thorough report. Most appreciated. Okay, item number seven is a report from the Ad hoc Benchmarking Library Services and Costs Committee. And I believe that trustee Thompson is going to speak to that one. And as soon as you unmute.
Thank you for the reminder. Yes, I just wanted to give a brief report, because I think we've kind of spelled out in, in the agenda report what we've been up to. But Marcia and I have been working with Inga on, starting an external benchmarking process. And we spent quite a bit of time trying to identify what we thought were the appropriate comparable cities in California to do our benchmarking comparisons with. And those cities are shown in the attachment, the other six cities in addition to Monterey, making a total of seven cities in the group. So I won't go through the detail of that, since I think it's described pretty fully in the agenda report. We've also been looking at the California State Library Survey, which they do annually. And they actually have some 348 data fields in that. And we've been trying to identify the ones that we think are the most useful to particularly focus on in our comparison. So we're, we're really getting to the point where we have the data fields that we think are, are helpful and the cities that we want to compare to, but we haven't really gotten into doing the actual comparisons. But once we do, we'll almost certainly decide that we need to find out more about why we may be higher or lower in certain areas. And so our intent is to do either interviews or a survey, or maybe both of the other benchmark cities to try to understand better where we may be higher or lower, or just to understand a little bit better what's going on. So we wanted to just kind of alert the Library Board of the approach that we're taking, give you an opportunity to comment or ask any questions. We don't have anything to report at this point, except the process that we're using to get started. So I think I'll leave my summary at that and see if there are any questions for Marcia or Inga or me, unless Marcia or Inga want to add to that overview.
Well, I just wanted to add that I think the, the data that we come up with is going to be very useful for future planning. It's going to certainly inform the Ad hoc Planning Committee, as well as any other future planning that we do as, as we, as we look to the future. Of course, the library survey data that we have is for the time before the pandemic. It, it, it gives us a very really thick way to, to benchmark ourselves against, against these other libraries so that we can, we can see where we're sort of out of whack or, or whether we're, we're lower than other cities. And it's, it's been very interesting to look at this data so far. So I think that we will have a lot, a lot of data to inform our planning in the future, which is a great thing.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, Marcia, real quickly. One of the things I, I meant to highlight and I forgot to was that, I, I think I speak for the entire committee when I say that we, we don't view this as trying to assign a grade to the Monterey Public Library or its director or anything of the sort. We see this as more of an opportunity to learn, you know, from other libraries where there may be opportunities to improve how we do business. So I, I, I want to disabuse anyone of the sense that our intent here is to come up with a grade for the library.
And, and, and in looking at these other libraries, we may find out some interesting practices that we can use, and, and they may learn from us. So I think it's a, it's a very nice exercise for us and for the other libraries that we're, and can be involved with. And Bob?
Yeah, I, I found this report of the research that was done very interesting. It brought back memories of when I taught research methods and statistics to college students. And the, the question after you get all these numbers is, well, what do they mean? What are we going to do with them? And I think, as Marcia pointed out, this will be very helpful for those of us that are, and for the entire board, looking forward for what do we want to plan and what's realistic. The first thought that came to my mind was it's been the City Manager's Office on numerous occasions that has pointed out, well, look how much Monterey has or is doing compared to other places. And, and sometimes, frankly, I think have presented comparisons that weren't entirely valid. And this research highlighting the six other city libraries that are comparable, at least the cities are, to Monterey on important criteria, I think is a very good step in the right direction toward making sense out of it. The one thing that I will just mention right now that I thought about since since receiving the chart that's on, what packet page is that? 31. While we are in the top half of these seven cities in terms of population, we are dead last in terms of square footage in our library. And I'm thinking of the recent presentation of G4 to the city council, where not only did she correctly convey our preference for which of their approaches we ultimately looked toward, there were council members as well who were looking at, at a minimum, I think some of them said, the plan that would bring us up to 31,000 feet, square feet. And if that were the case, then we would be approximately number three out of the group of seven, which is exactly where we are in terms of population as well. So if you want to say, well, you know, we need to provide as much space as others are of the same city, then the numbers here on this chart are right in front of us. And, you know, it can't hurt to be in the, above the median, in the top half, if we can do it. And so this just gives us even more, I mean, this data is even more supportive of the recommendations that G4 put out there, which the council said they would take into consideration when the time comes for, you know, more major financial planning for the city, after we see what our future revenue is going to be from maybe increased TOT tax and blah, blah, blah. But I think this complements that very, very well.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. We are thinking about this RFID project, that's one of the items that's coming up. And I was wondering in this list of comparable libraries, where we stand vis a vis them? How many of them have RFID implementation that they have found useful and as a saving of costs?
It's, it's, it's an interesting question that you asked. It's, it's one of the questions that, it, it wasn't on the survey. And so it's one of the questions in the set of questions that we're planning to ask libraries to find out. So we, we will be gathering that data. I mean, the other piece of data, we, we look like we have a lot of staff compared to some of the other libraries. But what does that staff include for other libraries? I mean, do they have a California history room with a staff member? Do they have, you know, museums and cultural arts? Do we, you know, do they have the things that we have? We look like maybe we have a larger budget. Do they have IT costs that the city is billing them in their budget? So in some sense, we have to make sure that we're not apples to oranges. And that's why we're going to have to do a follow-up.
To normalize the.
But having this data will help us to demythologize any thoughts that, oh, the library is maybe too richly funded or, or not enough. You know, we, we will actually have definitive data to be able to answer the questions that the city manager may ask us about, about how we stack up against other libraries.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Do we need, I guess we have questions from the public? Yes?
For anyone who would like to make a public comment, you are welcome to raise your Zoom hand or you may dial toll free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press the pound sign. And there are no callers.
Yeah, so thank you, Jim and Inga.
Thank you, Marcia.
Move on to the discussing options for a library board study session on priorities, priority setting. So Inga, you want to talk about?
Sure, I'll just briefly say that it's been a few years since we looked at our priorities and set our priorities and it's, we're, it's time to do it. And in the past, we've gotten together in a, on a Saturday morning, say, and we've talked about things. But now what we wanted to do, oh, and we've also previously had a separate meeting of the staff. But in talking with Jim and Marcia, we thought it would be good to have a study session where we invited the staff, since there's so few staff. And we all had the opportunity to talk together, of course, with the public invited as well. So we threw out some dates and it looks like one date in particular has come out as a date that everyone can make, which is November 12th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM AMP is available as well. And the only other possibility that a trustee suggested, and we, we haven't discussed as a group because of Brown Act, is do we want to try to have a study session be part of our December meeting? Because in November, we don't usually have a regular meeting because of the holidays. The study session in November would be a meeting in November. But do we want to wait instead and have it in December? And I would say that the pros and cons to that, one of the cons would be a couple of the staff members won't be able to attend. Well, one won't be able to attend, another would only be able to attend part of the time. And then also, would it become a really long meeting if it's tagged onto a regular meeting? Or would we have to abbreviate our regular meeting to allow time for a study session? So, and that's pretty much it. And I attached the strategic priorities that had been previously set to give us all some things to think about. And one more thing is Marcia had offered to find somebody to facilitate for us. I could facilitate or Marcia could facilitate. But we thought for full participation, it's good to have us not be facilitators as well. So Marcia found somebody who could do that for us.
Who could do it on November 12th, but who cannot do it.
Okay.
So if we want to do it in December, then we're going to have to go back to the drawing board. So we, not only did I find a facilitator, but I found a facilitator who's willing to do this gratis.
Pro.
Library doesn't have a budget for this, and I think it would be really helpful. So there was one other thing, and I thought maybe we would have a little ad hoc committee to plan this retreat and maybe Jennifer and myself and Inga get together. The, the, the other piece, I think that some very useful data would come out of, I mean, some, some plans that would help to inform the ad hoc planning committee as well as other efforts as we move forward, as we start looking at what the library is going to look like when this pandemic is over, not if, but when, and the doors reopen. So are there trustee comments? Jim?
I personally think we could do it either way, either at the December meeting or a special study session in November. It, it seems to me it would be good to have the staff be able to participate. And so, and also to not feel rushed. I think it's good to have, you know, have adequate time to do this kind of priority setting. So I would lean towards the November 12 study session. But again, I think either one could work if somebody has a major problem with, with having a study session on November 12.
Any other comment? Jennifer?
Yeah, personally, I would lean towards the November meeting so that we aren't feeling cramped or rushed trying to do this in conjunction with a regular board meeting. Also, staff will be stakeholders. So I think it's important to get their voices folded into this. And the cherry on the sundae is the fact that you have a facilitator who's available that date. So I would lean towards the November date and keeping it separate from a, a board meeting.
Any other comments? So Jennifer, you're good on, oh, Bob?
Well, I just wanted to say how glad I am we didn't get around to doing this when we really should have. Because with the change in the budget and COVID and how we are starting to think that that will have changes in our future services and programs and operations, we'd probably be going back and redoing all of this a second time had we done it, you know, eight months ago when we really should have. So just kind of pat ourselves on the back for being lazy for a while.
So I, I think one of the, one of the things that this group will do is decide on a little data packet that we'll send to people in advance because we've done surveys that, you know, some survey data, the original priorities. So we'll, we'll figure that out and, and get it to you in advance as well.
Right. Is there anything else in particular that trustees would like to make sure we include that you can think of right now? The surveys are something that I thought was going to be really helpful to have that public input.
Right, and the, the current strategic priorities to redo that?
Haven't we already received all that survey data?
Yeah.
As, as we have received the G4 recommendations that are, you know, forward looking. So I think it's most important for Jennifer to get it all because she probably hasn't.
Right, we'll make sure that happens. Uh, Jim? Unmute.
Sorry, I'm trying to be good by muting and then I'm forgetting to unmute. I, I think it might also be helpful if Inga has a list of priorities from the staff perspective. I think it would be useful to see that in advance, you know, that might help with our thinking as well, I believe.
So Jim, you're suggesting like a survey, so we, we've heard from staff ahead of time?
Not, not, not a survey of staff, but your own, as a director, your own list of priorities.
Oh, fabulous, okay. That's good, too.
But encourage the staff who join us to come with a, you know, a list of things that they want to make sure are in front of us. Not just come to listen, we're inviting them because we really want to hear what they are experiencing from, you know, from the trenches.
Right, and it normally is a part of the process is we have a staff process of talking about our priorities. Yeah, so that's important.
Yeah, so we'll just do it all together.
In, in fact, along those lines, Inga, if we do it on November 12, does that give you adequate time to do that process with the staff?
Well, no, that's why your staff are going to be there as full participants on the 12th.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant beforehand. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay.
You know, I mean, hopefully we can do this in one session. I mean, and maybe that we may want to use some of the time in this, in the December meeting to continue it or to follow it up or what, but this will at least get us going and lay the groundwork.
Well, I think that's definitely going to be the way it is because, you know, we, you can come up with all kinds of great ideas. And I'm speaking from having spent all the, well, since lunch on a Zoom meeting with the state commissioner I'm on, and they're talking about all these great things to do for seniors. But a lot of them aren't even going to be possible because of budget things and so forth. So we have to keep everything nimble and flexible enough to adjust to, you know, what resources we have when it comes time to do any of these priorities and programs and services and stuff.
Okay, I, I think we don't need public comment on this one, right?
I think we take public comment on everything.
And Jessica? Well, I guess we need public comment on this.
For anyone who would like to make a public comment, you're welcome to raise your Zoom hand or you may dial toll free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press the pound sign. There are no callers, chair morale.
Okay, so that concludes our new business. Now we move on to old business. And the most item in old business is to receive a report that we had requested on radio frequency identification technology and authorization to move forward within a request for proposal, if we're ready to do that. There was a committee, right? It was Inga and Harish.
Correct, so in the report, we restate the pros and cons that had been in the previous report. And then because of health concerns, trustee Joshi and I reviewed literature that was available. And we found one report in particular that had been commissioned by the union that represents library employees in Canada. And that seemed to be particularly helpful because it focused in on RFID systems in libraries. It was written in 2012, which was more current than, than some of the literature out there. But because it's focused in on RFID in libraries and also its impact on employees who are, are using it as well as impact that might be experienced by unborn children. And it was found that it was negligible. So we felt fairly confident about that. And trustee Joshi, do you want to add anything about the literature?
The literature that we looked at, we should provide links to it if somebody wants to question it and wants to look for it for himself or herself. Let's provide some links somewhere on the library thing, whatever we provide this information. So that way we can say, here's the thing that we refer to. If you have questions, look at it and then we can discuss it.
All right, so in the online version of the report, there, these are hyperlinks. But yeah, I agree that it could be written out separately as well.
Thank you.
And, and then the second part of the report is the request to have authorization from the library board to move forward for the request for proposal. And what I neglected or we neglected to clarify in that request is we say RFID system, but we don't mention an automated materials handling system. And, and that's my oversight because in my mind, I sort of see them all as one package. But of course, you can purchase them separately. And so a RFP, RFP for RFID, tongue twister, could focus on the initial tags and equipment that would be needed for checkout, but request as an add-on, what would be the price for an automated materials handling system, RFID-based? And then also the report, one of the questions that was asked at the last meeting was, was there a benefit to moving forward with, just at this point, just tagging the collection? So that, that certainly is something that could be done. I think there's some downsides to tagging the collection before you've selected your vendor and gotten your equipment. And one would be that, you know, they would be, I guess it would be dumb tags. They, they wouldn't be encoded yet. So you'd be touching, you'd, you'd be touching them once to get all the tags in and then you'd be touching them a second time to encode the tags. So that sounded more labor intensive. And then, of course, the original report from last month had suggested that we weed the collection first and there's a cost to weeding. Since that time, I, I sat in on a webinar by one of the vendors and I asked that question. In fact, it was yesterday I asked that question. And the sales rep at that webinar said that you can that you can, um, purchase materials through your jobber, your vendor. Um, and ask that the, they come with tags and then those tags be encoded. So that's one thing that, um, libraries do. But of course, we, we purchase from multiple vendors and some of them don't have that ability. And then also they said for, you know, a very small price, you could just get a little bit of equipment and some tags and, and start going if your goal was, you know, over the course of the next 24 months or so to eventually have your collection tagged. Um, so, you know, it can be scaled was basically what the vendor was saying in the interest, of course, of selling the equipment that he was selling. So in my mind, I still think it makes more sense to try to minimize the amount of time you touch or the number of times you touch your materials. Did anything else to add or questions?
The reason I mentioned that in the last meeting about the tags independently is that we might be constrained by the budget to where we can only buy a portion of it. So let's say we have the stock of tags sitting there. Now, it makes sense to just attach them rather than wait for the final day when we get everything and then do it all at once. So that was our motivation for saying, can we do it independently? Now, if you have only so much budget available now, you get the tags, why keep them sitting there waiting for the holy day?
Right. And I think the idea is that the overall cost of phase one, say, for instance, is significant enough that we would, we'll need to find the funds to do that. And, uh, might as well sort of bite it off in all one, one big bite.
Uh, question, Jim?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, uh, the report and, and I like the idea of making the AMH as an option. Again, we don't know if we'll have the funding, but, um, but if we do, it would probably make a lot of sense to do them in conjunction with each other. Um, and going back to the funding, I, I think when we talked about this last time, I forget now if it was, um, Nat or who it was, but somebody mentioned that there might be a possibility of getting, you know, paying for the system over time. And I don't know if it would make sense to ask for financing alternatives in the RFP as well, but it might make sense. So I just threw that out as something for the committee to consider. Uh, because obviously we don't have any funding at all at this point. But I'm optimistic that it's a high priority item that we will somehow find funding for. But, uh, asking in the RFP if there are financing alternatives might be worthwhile.
Jennifer? Yeah, I, I actually implemented an RFID project at Hartnell College. And, um, I would be strongly in favor of handling materials as few times as possible. Do it once, do it right, do it completely. And I think the other thing you need to think about too is the fact that the cut over between the, the current system and the new system. What we found was, uh, once we did the cut over and we had the self-checkout stations, it really minimized the amount of staff time required to process materials. Uh, and, uh, I mean, we were just bombarded with students over there. The turnover and the circulation was incredible. Kind of like Monterey Public Library at three thirty in the afternoon during normal times. Uh, so I, I would be strongly in favor of trying to come up with enough funding to do it once, do it right. And, uh, do it all at once. Hey, Bob?
Yeah, um, well, now, now we know why Jennifer was selected to be on the board with that just right on experience with all of that. Three things citing the, um, the, the two, um, summary statements that are in this very well-done report. One, uh, from the Canadian study saying there are no known adverse health effects from low dose, non-ionizing radiation, blah, blah, blah. And then earlier there is the quote from the World Health Organization that says, uh, "Current evidence does not confirm the existence of any health consequences from exposure to low-level electromagnetic fields." And third, because, uh, the city manager has responded favorably to suggestions that require a, a short-term expense if the anticipation and expectation is that will lead to a long-term savings. And what Jennifer just said seems to indicate that with, you know, firsthand experience with it. But, um, for all of those reasons, um, I would like to move that we grant authorization to move forward with an RFP for both the RFID and the EMF. I'm sorry, not the EMF, the, uh, what was the other acronym?
AMH.
Whatever it is.
AMH.
AMH? Okay. Systems. And, uh, then we can see, as Harish was pointing out, what we have money to use and when we have the money and how we might get enough to start implementing, uh, these things. But I think that we should authorize, uh, moving forward with the request for proposal so that we know really what we're looking at. And in that request, uh, when it is presented to either city councilor or city manager, uh, I think it would be an excellent idea to, um, use the experience that Jennifer has with the installation of a similar system. And we're not just sort of thinking that it might be good. She has some firsthand knowledge. So that would be my motion in a, and in short, I think we should, uh, move forward with the RFP for both uh, portions of the project that Inga was talking about.
So before you make the motion, um, Francesca, do we need public comment before the motion is made?
I think it's before the vote.
At least before the vote.
Before the vote, okay, so.
I'll, I'll second. Comment on the motion if it gets seconded.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
I wanted to mention, um, something is, uh, during this COVID period, I know that one of our comparator cities, and that's Coronado, implemented RFID. And also I was in a discussion earlier this week with, um, department heads. It was a state library organized, uh, discussion. And Watsonville has just implemented RFID as well. And, um, so a number of libraries are implementing RFID or have already implemented RFID. But, uh, seeing this pandemic as a particular time where it involves less handling of materials and it empowers the customers to do more of their own checking out of things, so seen as a benefit.
So I have, uh, two questions actually. Uh, one of them is, um, is it in the RFP or somewhere where we can do some sort of analysis about, um, will it be labor-saving and about how much, how much labor it will save? Does that, is that going in the RFP or is that just something that's part of the discussion? It, so, so it, it sort of cost benefit, um, analysis. Uh, and, and then my second question is, um, is, is the tagging something that can be done by volunteers? Or is this some, is this something that is a, that, that, that needs to be done by staff?
And the workshops that I've been attending, um, they say that it can be done by volunteers. I know, um, one of our, uh, part-time seasonal workers, uh, did the tagging for Selena's Public Library and, um, he said, oh, but you probably don't want to use volunteers. I guess there can be some, you know, potential um, issues about schedule and so forth with volunteers. But, um, because you're not dealing with any of the customer, uh, records and so forth, it is something that could be done by volunteers. In my estimates in, um, the previous month's packet, I estimated that we would be using library staff, but it was at the library page level, which is the, the minimal, um, pay grade.
I, I would imagine there's a training, there's a learning curve too that we want you to use the same people all the time. And then the people coming in and out.
Uh huh. I did do some estimates in the, uh, last board, uh, report about, uh, time savings and, but if, um, you'd like some more of that kind of research, we could certainly do it.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we can just carry it forward if, if, if it's already been done, that's fine. Other, yeah, Jim?
One other comment I have is while the library is closed, and we don't know how long that will be at this point, but it does seem to me that it's a great opportunity to try to get this done, uh, towards not disrupting the operations.
Exactly.
So anything we could do within reason to expedite the process, uh, which to me, if you have volunteers, they can be wonderful, but they often slow things down in my experience. So to me, that would be an argument that if we can do it with, uh, low-paid staff, you know, we might be able to get it done more quickly. And I think anything we can do to expedite it would be worthwhile within reason.
Okay, thank you. I did want to say that the volunteers that have been working with us right now have been outstanding. Um, and we wouldn't be able to provide sidewalk service without them. So I, we love our volunteers.
Other staff comments before we have public comment?
Uh, just real, real quickly and, and, and what, um, for the same reason that Jim, um, was talking is why I asked, could we find some kind of way of paying for it over time instead of all at once? Because it would expedite getting it started that much quicker.
We do have a potential donor interested in assisting in a small way.
Be the best. Other comments? Okay, Francesca, you want to do both comments before we vote?
Yes. So for viewers watching, you may raise your Zoom hand. Or to join by telephone, please dial toll-free eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Enter meeting ID one six zero nine three two two one one eight, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press the pound sign. To make a public comment, raise your hand using Zoom. Or if connected by phone, dial star nine. When called upon, please dial star six to unmute yourself. We, um, ask that public commenters turn off the TV or computer speakers to ensure a quiet background. I will call on each public speaker in the order of their hand raised. The chair has designated a three-minute time limit for today's meeting with a countdown timer to be shown on the screen. Please stay within your time limit so that I do not have to cut you off. We look forward to receiving your public comment. And it does look like we do have a comment for just one moment, please. All right. And thank you for calling. You may now dial star six to unmute yourself. The caller ending in six eight one.
Hello?
Yes, you are live with the Monterey Public Library Board of Trustees.
I have a question. I mean, last meeting, um, Matt was here and he agreed to help do some legwork on finding vendors and costs and stuff. And, um, is that coming later? Is he going to help with that later or did he un-volunteer?
Uh, Inga, do you know?
Sure. So, um, he was tasked with helping with an RFP. And, um, at this point, uh, Harish worked on the RFP and we didn't need Nat yet. We didn't need his assistance yet, but he's still very willing to, uh, assist us.
Okay, thank you. Great. Thank you very much for calling today.
And we didn't get the, um, have the caller state her name. Do we need to do that?
I'm happy to state my name. This is Phoebe, Phoebe Pagano.
Hi, Phoebe. Thank you for calling.
You're welcome. So now do I mute myself or just hang up? I should just hang up, right?
Well, you can, you're welcome to stay on and just mute.
But then I won't be muted. Are, were they muted?
Yeah, oops. Yes, you're muted. Um, so you're welcome to stay on and listen if you'd like to in real time. And that is the only public comment. Thank you so much for calling in today.
Um, so I think we're ready for a vote now?
There are no more callers?
No more callers.
Okay.
All right. Trustee Felgoth?
Yes.
Trustee Joshi?
Aye.
Trustee Petty?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Chair Moro?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, um, we have, you have the, you'll have our blessing to move forward with this.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to the next item, which is to approve a one-time payout of the Community Foundation Endowment Fund 2020 Earnings Library Trust Fund. Inga, you want to comment on this? This is a kind of continued item from the last.
Sure. It, it's something that we explored in the past and then we decided we would wait and see if we, uh, really thought we would need it and that, uh, we need to take action. Uh, if we're going to do it this year, um, before the end of the year. And so, um, this recommendation is that we approve a one-time payout of Community Foundation Endowment Fund 2020 earnings, um, to the Library Trust Fund. And it's specifically, uh, we would use it for RFID. With the understanding that if the RFID project did not go forward, we would, uh, library board would determine an alternate use for it.
Or, or if it's funded by some other means, by a donation or something, we don't need it for that. And are there, anybody, um, anybody want to speak to this? This, we, we have talked about it before and, um, you know, it's, 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 it's a shame to take money out of an endowment. But this seems to be a, if, if ever there was a time we would need it, it would be this time. Uh, Jim?
I, I would just add one suggestion to expand on the, um, notion that we would earmark the money for the RFID. That if in fact, we did get, um, donor funding for the RFID, that we could also use it for the automated material handling, which kind of in my mind, they go together.
Thank you. I keep doing that. Yes, for one or the other. And also I, I didn't mention, but the thinking was that we would be telling the community foundation, this is a one-time, um, action and then, uh, until we, you voted otherwise, we would continue to reinvest each year. The amount that is eligible to be taking out, taken out would not be taken out.
And go back to building the endowment, yes. Any comments? Good, so.
Yeah, well, um, I think that's a wise thing to say we hope to do, but I don't think we want to lock ourselves into an absolute that we would never make such a request again. Uh, because who knows what the financial situation will be like 12 months from now. Uh, but certainly that would be our, I think, our intent. And similarly, I think our intent will be to use it for the RFID or AM what? H? AM, yeah, AMH, um, systems. But again, if, uh, we don't need the money for that because we get a windfall from a donor or something, then I'm sure we'll be able to find other, um, valuable uses for it. Given the, uh, cut in our budget for this current fiscal year. So, uh, whether we think we're going to use it to buy pencils or our, isn't the issue so much as we need the money to, uh, progress.
I'd like to add about, one of the things that Bob said about not going back in the future. The purpose of this one- the purpose of this one-time was to say, don't make it ongoing by default. If we need it, we'll discuss it again, and we can pass another resolution next year, but not make it an ongoing until we turn it off. Because this is for this year, right now the situation is difficult. If things change, that's wonderful. If they don't, we can go back again next year and re-request.
Exactly. I think that was the intent, yes.
So it is not a one-time, the way it reads, as a, you know, once-in-a-lifetime. It's not meant to be that way.
Right, so that.
If I could, I'd suggest instead of calling it one-time, we'll say non-automatically recurring. How's that?
Why do we have to say anything other than we want to take the money out for 2020, period?
Well, so currently, we've told them that we want it reinvested, and we told them that when the fund was first set up in 2005. And so they haven't come to us every year and asked us, do you want to continue to reinvest it? So I guess the thinking was that if we change that plan one year, we want to be clear with them that we're not then making that change on an ongoing basis. But we want to default to the reinvestment unless we specify to do otherwise.
That's good. Okay, so do we have a motion here?
I'll move.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Before we vote, public comment?
For anyone who would like to make a public comment, you are welcome to raise your Zoom hand. Or if you're joined by telephone, by dialing toll-free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press the pound sign. Please dial star nine if you are dialing by phone and would like to speak. If you are in the Zoom meeting itself, please raise your hand. I will call on each speaker in the order that they raise their hand. And again, if you would like to speak and you are calling by phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand.
Okay.
Okay, and so there are no callers that have raised their hands. And again, that is, if you're dialing by phone, star nine.
Shall we move to a vote?
Trustee Felgoth?
Yes.
Trustee Joshi?
Yes.
Trustee Petty?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Chair Moro?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move on to our last item of old business, which is to receive a report from the Ad-Hoc Library Planning Committee and promote it to staff. So, Inka, you want to start us off on this one?
Uh, yes. Just need to get to the right page of my packet.
Forty-one.
Forty-two.
There we go. Okay, so, so the Ad-Hoc Library Planning Committee met on October 7th after our September Library Board meeting, and we talked about two things. Our, in two, our, our discussion fell into sort of two categories. One category is, we know for the time being, we're not going to be changing our service plan and reopening. So for the things that we've committed to providing to the public, are we adequately staffed to do those activities? And the main things were sidewalk service and the reference service by phone and email, and then also programming. So we know we received funds through the trust fund for teen and youth programming, so that's great. But how are we doing with sidewalk service and phone? And one of the things we knew was that I've been putting in on Mondays, I pretty much am checking in books all day. And so is Kim Smith, our librarian, and that isn't exactly the best use of our time. And then we also know that the phone being answered by Francesca and Kim takes up a big chunk of their time, and there are other things that aren't happening, aren't getting done, aren't being accomplished because of that. And so the very minimum, or trustees asked me to come up with, what's the minimum amount of staffing that would help alleviate that? And just trying to be as frugal as possible, it would be 10 additional hours of part-time seasonal library assistant one, and then 10 hours of a librarian to help answer the phones. So that is what we're recommending for the short term. And then trustee Petty was going to talk about sort of the long-term things that we were thinking about. But were there questions or comments about the short term?
Jim?
I might just make a quick comment. The recommendation is that the funding come from the city's reopening and hiring fund. And I just wanted to mention that I got a call from the city manager this afternoon because the way that fund is set up, the council has delegated to him the ability to authorize funding out of that. And he wanted to, wanted me to assure the board that he was in full support of this recommendation, and that he would be happy to fund this through the city's reopening and hiring fund. So he wanted to make sure you were all aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Yes, he called me as well, so that's great news. Any questions about that request?
I hope it's not too low, that's all. I hope it, you know, I hope the help that you get will allow you to go back to being the library director again. And, and it will allow everybody to take care of the business if they need to, so.
Inka, you're already in the process of.
I'm sorry, my computer froze.
Are you already in the process of making that request for the 20,000?
No, because I was waiting for this board meeting to see if that was the will of the board.
That we direct staff to request the 20,740 in part-time seasonal hours funded through the reopening and hiring fund.
Okay, I'll second that.
Inka, Jennifer second? Okay, thank you.
Okay. And for anyone that would like to make a comment on this item, you may raise your Zoom hand or join by telephone by dialing toll-free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. And Chair Moro, there are no callers.
Okay, so we'll vote on this, and then we'll continue with Bob's report, okay?
Yes, trustee Felgoth?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Joshi?
Yes.
Trustee Petty?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Chair Moro?
Okay, so now, Bobby, we're going to talk a little bit about our thoughts about.
Yeah, well, in consideration of time, I will, I will make it little, emphasis on little. Because I think a lot of the long-term planning is, you know, on the future menu and plates for the Ad-Hoc Planning Committee. And a lot of the things that we think about, and to any degree of specificity, will be a function of what the funding is going to be like, which is going to be a function of what gets approved by the voters at the next election. And, you know, one domino hits the next. Also, the success of what we are currently doing. But most importantly, I think we all understand and agree that the likelihood of having as much funding available as we are used to, even in the long run, and by that I mean more than three years from now, is unlikely. And we're probably going to have to continue doing the fantastic job the library's been doing with less, with fewer dollars to spend. And we are also probably going to be using remote programs and processes, whether it's Zoom or something else, to provide a lot of what we have, more so than we have in the past. And through the assessments of the needs and wants of our community, we may be trying brand-new things that we had never done before. And because times change and peoples change, and what they want changes. And so there's so much that, it's rather exciting that we now have the opportunity, by, we're forced in, forced into it, stand back and look at what we want to become. And a lot of it will be continuing and tweaking and improving on what we've done so well. But I think a lot of it will be, and I hope, brand-new and innovative and challenging. And because of that, I don't think we can talk about anything in any specific fashion other than to say we need to be open, taking into consideration a lot of the analysis of the benchmarking research that was done. I mean, you know, whether we get RFID will have a little bit of a bearing on what we can afford to do because that'll take staff or not staff. So, but I think just being open to innovation and using new technology, coming up with different kinds of programs, looking at changes in the population, specifically from my point of view in the increased number of retirees, because the boomers are just, you know, sitting around. And luckily, a lot of them are sitting around with money so that they can call up Mary Jane and say that they'd like the help in that way, too. And so, you know, times are a-changing, and we need to change as well. And, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, we got a great opportunity to do it.
Thank you. Thank you. Sets our direction for the future. Okay, now we move on to informational reports. And the first one is the fund development overview, which is Mary Jane, right?
And I think that we have enough time, because it's 5:37 to.
Yeah.
See if they're, well, Mary Jane, if you want to give a brief overview, or if you want to see if there are questions?
Want to give us a brief overview on it?
Just very briefly, to say that in response to questions that came up at the very end of the last Board of Trustees meeting, we assembled a kind of a collection of development fundamentals in general, and fundamentals about Monterey Public Library's development program. All presented at sort of a 30,000-foot height to kind of a sampler of information. And covering some definitional items that I hope help. Also describing the three sort of receptacles is really not the right word, but the three ways in which charitable gifts can come into the library, either directly to the trust fund, through the Friends and Foundation, or to the endowment. And then the last little chapter was kind of a thumbnail sketch of the history of the fund development program at Monterey Public Library, and kind of its earmarks, the number of donors, size of the budget, the staff in the past, and the like. So I'm happy to take questions this afternoon, where I know we're watching our watches. Or at any time in the future, either in the context of a meeting like this or any old time, my mobile phone number is on my email signature, so.
And Mary Jane and I said we would love to sit down with any of the trustees and just go over all your fund development questions.
This is.
They will help us communicate more clearly, so really would be very grateful when you, when you do have questions, if you'll drop us the line.
This is an extremely thoughtful and well-put-together report, and I thank you very much for doing this. I, I have one question, which was that have, in our appeals for money, it's kind of streamlined, our approach, it, it, it used to be that it was kind of confusing when you got a request for money from the library, do you want it to go to this place, or this place, or this place? I think that you've, you want to say, just say something about that. I think it's here somewhere, but.
Sure, I think that we really, with all the work that you acknowledged earlier in this meeting that took place with the Friends and Foundation and the Transition Committee, the fundraising has really, I think, needs to pivot, and really, our, our forward face needs to be fundraising under the auspices of the Friends and Foundation. Doesn't mean that by request, we can't accept gifts handily, directly to the trust fund. But I think we want to lend our, all of our, we definitely want that to lead with that foot. We want people to begin to think about the Friends and Foundation of Monterey Public Library as this powerhouse of fundraising in the future. So I think that, for example, we're preparing a fall appeal that is very, going to be very late. It will, it will arrive mid-November this year, later than, than, yeah, it's, it's arriving mid-November, and that will be so, we will be soliciting gifts solely on behalf of the Friends and Foundation.
And that was, is one of the pieces of advice that we received from Library Strategies, the consultants that we worked with, was that our, our literature in the past, our envelopes, our campaign appeals and so forth, talked about these different funds as opposed to the impact of a gift. So what you want to focus on is, if you make a gift, what kind of impact will it have? And then we're happy to talk with people about, you know, which bucket it's going to go into. But if you start with, you know, we have all these different buckets, then people, you know, get confused about that, and they lose the whole idea of, oh, what is it actually doing for my community?
Or which one should I give to?
Right. Sometimes people stop if they have a question in their minds about how to make the gift, and that, we definitely don't want them stopping.
Right. Any, yeah, Jim?
I also wanted to second Marcia's comments. I thought this was an excellent report and really appreciated. I thought it provided a nice framework for thinking about these things. The only question I had, and it's almost more of a comment, though I'll make it as a question, under planned giving, I know in the past, there's been kind of an assumption that that was kind of geared towards the endowment fund. But my understanding is that while that's still an option, that it'll be probably a little more focused towards the Friends and Foundation. Is that correct?
It will, it will be the Friends and Foundation that will be the forward-facing receiving of, but I've always been a little bit confused about how in past years, and including in the Library Strategies report, it was written that planned gifts would go to the endowment because planned gifts go wherever the donor wants them to go.
Exactly.
And wherever, wherever those of us who are representing the library in our discussions emphasize when we talk to donors. So that's always mystified me a little bit. I think if we're lucky enough, or when we're lucky enough to get completely, to receive completely unrestricted requests, for example, then it would be up to the director and this board to determine whether some things are turned into the endowment or spent for a particular purpose.
I see, so it's possible for somebody to put in their state plan, Monterey Public Library, end of story.
Yes.
And so when that happens, then it's that, it's, there's no default. It doesn't go into the endowment unless they ask it to, unless they specify that. So at that point, it can, it's, it's your discretion where it goes.
Or our discretion.
Board's discretion, yes.
Well, just to follow up, my own comment would be that there should be, I think, in the future, no automatic assumption that a bequest or another planned gift has to go to the endowment fund. That may have been the case in the past, but I think we should break with that assumption. And obviously, if the donor has a specific request, we, obviously, we're going to honor that, no question about it. But I know, I think we should break totally with any assumption that a planned gift is headed towards the endowment fund, because I think that's created some confusion.
So it's where we, where the library deems it is most needed at the time.
We've tried to not to downplay the opportunity to give to the endowment, and it has a pretty prominent spot on the Friends and Foundation website, and somewhat so on MPL's website as well. So we don't want to hide that, we have donors who really care about it. And, yes, but we've eliminated language about kind of a channel of funding toward the endowment through bequests.
But the 1849 Society was, the membership dues into the 1849 Society were to go to the endowment. Was that correct? That was my understanding.
Yep.
That that's what everyone who joined that joined with the understanding that their money was going into the endowment.
Yes.
Right, and the endowment is a really important fund. And the whole idea is that it's for future, for our future, and for the library's future. And that eventually, eventually, it will be at such a level that the annual earnings and interest would be able to fund many of the library services that we offer. And that's a model that is comparable to many other library foundations. They have an endowment that generates enough interest that, you know, their children's services are paid for through the endowment, and their adult programs are paid for through the endowment, and the collections are all purchased through the endowment.
Jim?
And just one other clarification, on the 1849 Society that we were just talking about, that's now being transitioned to the 1849 Legacy Society, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is my question, is I understand that the new Legacy Society will include people that make donations to the endowment fund, that it also will include people that make planned gifts that could go to the Friends and Foundation or to the endowment fund. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Or the trust fund.
Or the trust fund, yes.
Okay, but your appeal is not going to have all those boxes for people to check.
Right, I don't think in an annual appeal, you don't really want to give, again, too many choices. Although we will use the remit device as a way of finding out if people have made bequests, if they're interested in more information about making a bequest, and/or interested in knowing more about the endowment. But really, you want to either have, the only choice that they ought to make is how much, and whether it's ongoing, monthly, or a one-time gift. We'll also, just to try to tamp down any confusion, in our fall appeal, we are cognizant of the fact that many people are giving through MC Gives. And it's wonderful, and so we will acknowledge that I don't want people to, I want people to, who read the appeal, to understand that we know that MC Gives is going on at the same time as our fall appeal, and that it's all good.
Right, they're not in competition. And in fact, from here on out, for the next 18 to 24 months, any requests for donations that we make are all under this umbrella of the Friends and Foundation's big campaign for helping, you know, continue library services, given the devastating budget reductions. So that's tentatively, that campaign's tentatively been called Monterey Learns exclamation point.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, I mean, so, because frankly, the Monterey Gives and the fall appeal that Mary Jane's talking about are in competition with each other this year, anyway. Because I think a lot of people may say, well, wait a minute, I just gave to Monterey Gives, and now you're hitting me up again. Or, I'm going to wait, because I hear they're going to have a fall appeal, so I'm going to skip Monterey Gives and and wait for that. But my understanding is that's just a circumstance of the way the cards have been dealt this year. And that in the future, we wouldn't plan to have a special fall appeal right on the heels or overlapping with Monterey Gives if we participate in that again. That does seem like a double whammy to me.
There's always, this does happen, either it's, you know, the fall appeal goes out in October, and then MC Gives is announced in November, or they both are announced in November. This has been an issue in the past, and because MC Gives is coordinated by the Friends and Foundation, there was a sense from some staff that they were in competition. But because our fall appeal will mention sort of the broader need that the library has, and that there's this campaign going on through MC Gives, and also you can just, you know, reply with this envelope, the idea is they're not really in competition, it's all good, and it's all needed by the library at this time.
It's all good, but in the eyes of the potential donor, it's, it's like two competing solicitations, even though it's all going to end up in the same. And, you know, I often wonder, what's so magic about the fall and not a spring? And then MC Gives is kind of like the fall one. But when, at least when I get multiple things from the same worthy charity to which I might give money, and they're just one after the other, after the other, I think, wait a minute. You know, stop hitting me over the head. And so since both of these are fairly substantial pitches, I just think that, you know, especially since the upcoming one, that the learn exclamation point is sort of going to be an ongoing thing. You know, I just, I just think that people are going to be less likely to respond to both this year.
Keep in mind that they go to really different populations, that MC Gives is something that is advertised in the weekly, and that Inga and I have been reaching out to some of the more substantial donors from last year on a one-to-one basis. But they're not receiving a mailing or even a newsletter article from us that mentions MC Gives. It reaches a whole sector that is different from our donor base of about, we're going to probably be mailing about 700 or 750 letters. And those will include, it'll probably be a PS that says, you know, if you've given to MC Gives, we're very grateful, thank you very much. And so I think we can manage it by the way that we communicate. And we are mailing for MC Gives.
Yeah, I just want to turn on donors and not turn them off for the future.
I agree.
So what is the window, MC Gives is only in the fall, and it ends at Christmas time, is that it?
Yeah.
It's probably announced on November 12th. Yeah, it's an eight-week program. And some nonprofits use it as their fall appeal. Okay, so in the interest of time, I know we probably need to move on. And I wonder if we could take public comments for all of the informational reports, since none of them require action? And we could just see, Marcia, if there are any comments on the other two informational reports?
Yes, the financial and the statistical reports are in your packet. And are there, does anybody have any questions on either of those?
In a statistical report, typically, and it shows, you know, attendance at the different programs. But we're not having those in-person programs now, and so naturally, the percentages are way down, because we're not having those programs now. But do we have data of how many people are signing up for the various remote programs that we've been offering? You know, the meditation ones, and the Zoom ones, and the, the, what do you call it, the one that Westbrook does?
Yes, and then the improv.
Yeah, do we have data for how many people signed up for each of those?
We do, that's actually what the statistic report reflects, is the virtual programs combined. But they're not separated.
Okay. So.
It looks like Inga has frozen. But since I provide those statistics to David, that is why I'm familiar with it.
Do we need public comment on these reports?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll just do one for all of.
While we're waiting for Inga to come back, let's do, let's do the public comments.
Great, and this will be for all of the informational reports? Okay, so if there are any public caller comments for any of these reports, you may do so by dialing toll-free 833-568-8864, enter meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. And we do encourage those who want to make public comments to join us on Zoom Gov, which is live, and will have no delay. For any callers, you will dial *9 to raise your hand if you would like to speak or make a public comment. Again, please dial *9 if you would like to make a public comment. I see that someone has called, but they have not raised their hand. So again, if you have joined by telephone and you would like to make a comment, please press *9 to indicate that you would like to speak. This then raises your hand in Zoom.
In the interest of time, since we have three minutes.
Yes.
And we call for trustee comments now?
Yes.
Francesca is gone.
Oh, no, I'm here.
Yes, okay, can we call for, we'll call for trustee comments?
Yes.
We'll start with trustee Joshi, any comments?
None, this has been a very informative meeting, and welcome to our new trustee here.
Trustee Felgoff, you can come.
I'm just thrilled to be working with you all and being able to work on this particular project. And I hope my background and skills and things that will provide help. Thank you.
Trustee Petty?
Looking forward to the planning meeting.
Yeah. Trustee Thompson?
Three real quick things, one, I wanted to, again, welcome Jennifer, and I think you've already shown what a wonderful asset you will be to the board. So thank you for participating. Secondly, I wanted to just highlight that the Inga and Bob and I helped present the library feasibility study to the council, and we, we thought the reception of that was quite good. And I want to thank Inga and the consultants and everyone involved for getting through that process. It took a lot longer than we thought we would, but I think, given the financial circumstance, it went over fairly well. Thank you.
Okay, and I want to thank all of the trustees for participating in these ad hoc committees to getting the work done, and for Mary Jane for putting together a great report, and Francesca for holding us all together, and Inga for steering the ship. So thank you all. And with that, 5:59, meeting is adjourned.
See you on the 12th.
Thank you.